Alrighty, I'm gonna call the meeting order and ask you to rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America.
In this one with liberty and justice for all.
I want to have a seat. I want to welcome everybody to the meeting tonight, whether you're viewing it or you're here. We've got some guests, which is always good. Glad we can open it back up. Roll call, everybody that is present. Under Old Business, I need approval of the minutes. The regular meeting minutes of December 17th, 2020 are attached. I motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of December 17th, 2020 as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, any discussion?
Mr. McNeil?
Yes.
Brungart?
Yes.
Mr. Stoudnica?
Yes.
Mr. Trinkle?
Mr. Trinkle?
Tim Stein?
Davey?
Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
Mr. Major?
Yes.
Mr. Garvey?
Yes.
Bueller?
Yes.
Alright, motion passed. New business, anybody in the audience that would like to address the governing body that's not on the agenda, I think everybody's here for the one thing, so we'll move right along. Was there anything, Sarah, that you needed to, anything? Okay. Presentations, Officer Recognition, Life Saving Award. Chief, all yours.
Mayor, Council, tonight, we'd like to, we've had a we had an incident in December that we'd like to recognize an officer for, for his actions that he took during that event. So we're gonna, I'm gonna have Officer Munoz step up here, and we're gonna present him with a life-saving award. Face the screen, they want to see you. On December 16th, Officer Munoz was dispatched to a medical call for service in which a two-month-old infant was found not breathing. Upon his arrival, he made contact with the parent, determined that CPR was needed, initiated CPR, and during the time that he was waiting for EMS to arrive, the child became responsive. When unresponsive, he continued CPR. Became responsive again, went unresponsive, continued CPR until District One Fire and EMS arrived on scene and took over care for the infant child. The child was transported to St. John's Hospital and, you know, later transferred to Children's Mercy Hospital by ambulance. I spoke with the parents, the grandparents are here in the audience tonight. The child is still alive and I believe is gonna be having surgery, have a device put in to help, you know, control the heart, some of the heart issues and stuff. So with a two-month-old and his quick response and getting there in an extremely timely manner and the actions that he took, we deem that it's appropriate that, you know, his actions directly related to the saving of this child and giving this child the fighting chance. So that's what we're here right now to do, is to honor him with that, with the life-saving award. These don't come along a lot in a career. They're very infrequent. We do respond to a lot of these calls, but not all, they don't have the outcome that we would like them to have all the time. So on this one, we want to recognize him for the actions that he took and award him with a certificate of commendation for life-saving award with those events that I just described to you. And I did not ask, and I don't know if you want to say a few words or not, I don't want to put you all on the spot or anything, but if you'd like to come up and say a few words, I don't have a problem with that.
Come on up.
Is the grandfather of the child?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm John Burgoyne, the grandfather of Everly, Luno. I was an EMT for 10 years and a lot of times, the officers responding and the medics also never get the opportunity to to be thanked like they should be. And I felt it was, it's a necessary thing to thank you, Officer Nunez, for the actions you took the morning of the 16th. And more than likely, if it hadn't been for your actions, our seven-week-old granddaughter at that time, we would have been coming up here to attend a funeral for her. So between myself, my wife, and the parents, we want to extend a very well heartfelt thank you for what you have done. And we have a plaque that we are ordering for you, and we'll bring, getting with the Chief of Police to present that to you also. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
I apologize for not asking you folks that earlier and putting you on the spot, but thank you for coming tonight. Also in December, on the 28th, we had another incident. I'm gonna have Officer Munoz and Officer Martin step up here, both. On the 28th of December, Officer Munoz and Officer Martin were signed out on the patrol. They had another call. This was for a 52-year-old man that was reported deceased. Officers arrived on scene and began to administer CPR to the individual. They deployed an AED while they were doing the CPR. The AED delivered one shock to the individual and it did resuscitate him. He did revive back out to where he was able to be somewhat responsive to medical crews, District One Fire and Leavenworth County EMS. When they arrived, he was transported to the hospital for further treatment and have not made contact with the family on that. But the actions that they took that night also for another individual on life-saving, directly related and given the person a fighting chance at survival with their quick actions, quick response, and doing what they were trained to do in these. So we've had, in the month of December, we've had a pretty, pretty active month for medical calls and we've had some good, we've had some good results out this month, which is a really good thing. So, you know, Officer Munoz, the life-saving awards don't happen a lot, but he's been able to get two of them in one month, which is, you know, I don't know if he considers himself lucky, but he was in the right place at the right time and did what he needed to do. Both officers did what they needed to do in this situation and saved a man's life. So we're gonna recommend, or we're recommending them for the certificate of commendation for a life-saving award and for both of those to get that. Also in the future, we have them ordered, they'll have ribbons that they can wear on their uniform that signify a life-saving award. So that way, if they so choose, they can choose to display those, so that if anybody asks, they can tell what they're for. Good job.
Thank you, Chief. Grandparent, I want to thank you folks for coming up to do that. Officers, to say I'm very proud would be an understatement. I really appreciate what you've done here. This is the kind of thing that you put that badge on for, and I'm glad to see you could carry it out. So, again, heartfelt congratulations to both of you and your families for being part of this. Thank you. Okay, item number three, ordinance number 1052, codification of ordinances. This ordinance has codifies any ordinances passed since January 2020. By adopting this ordinance, the city code will be codified. Need a motion to approve and adopt ordinance number 1052.
Second.
Motion second, any discussion?
Mr. McNeil?
Yes.
Mr. Brungart?
Yes.
Mr. Stoudnica?
Yes.
Mr. Trinkle?
Yes.
Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
Mr. Major?
Yes.
Mr. Garvey?
Yes.
Mr. Bueller?
Yes.
Passes, very good. Item number four, request to purchase police department vehicles. Bids were received for two Dodge or rental police packages, patrol vehicles. Three bids were received. The cost, which was approved for the 2021 budget, is for the vehicles only and will place a 2012 Dodge Charger and a 2015 Ford Explorer. I need a motion to approve the purchase of two police package patrol vehicles from CDJ Automotive LLC in the amount not to exceed $65,800.
So moved.
Motion second, any discussion, folks?
I'm glad to see a shopping local again.
Well, this is the first year we've taken bids to the Dodge dealership in town for quite a few years. And you know, for whatever reason, they haven't returned them. So for them to return a bid this year and be super competitive is a super good thing. I was very happy with that. Nothing, I don't have anything against Landmark, I don't have anything against Davis Moore, but having hometown business come in, low bid, definitely, definitely was a surprise and it's a good surprise.
It's awesome.
Mr. McNeil?
Yes.
Mr. Brungart?
Yes.
Mr. Stoudnica?
Yes.
Mr. Trinkle?
Yes.
Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
Mr. Major?
Yes.
Mr. Garvey?
Yes.
Mr. Bueller?
Yes.
Item number five, Fire District Number One Joint Board Appointments. Due to vacancy on Fire District Board of Trustees, the Joint Board will need to convene to fill the vacancy. The city needs to appoint two council members along with Mayor Leg McNeil to represent the City of Lansing on the Leavenworth County Fire District Number One Joint Board.
I'll go.
Who we, who we said that?
Gene and Kerry.
Don Stoudnica.
Well.
Gene and Kerry.
Okay. So I need a motion?
For Mayor Leg Tony, McNeil, Gene Kirby, and Kerry Brungart.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion on that issue?
Mr. McNeil?
Yes.
Mr. Brungart?
Yes.
Mr. Stoudnica?
Yes.
Mr. Trinkle?
Yes.
Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
Mr. Major?
Yes.
Mr. Garvey?
Yes.
Mr. Bueller?
Yes.
Alright, motion. I'm sure Tim will be getting with you on a time and date if you're gonna convene, I believe, Tim. Alrighty, city attorneys, Greg on there?
Was.
Let's see his name. Okay, we'll move along. Tim?
I really don't have much. So four years ago, we were kind of thrust into an interesting position, working together. It had the potential to be interesting, but I think we worked really well together. You were always respectful to me and, you know, valued my opinion, even when sometimes we didn't always agree. So I always appreciated that about you and you will be missed. Good luck at the county. I know you'll do a really good job over there. But we'll miss you at City Hall, but I know Mayor McNeil's gonna do a great job and it's gonna be great to see you over at the county.
Thank you, Tim.
That's all I have.
Okay, before we go, I'd just like to say a couple things, if y'all bear with me. First of all, working with the city for 40 years, I gotta thank God for letting me do it. This is my hometown. Being an Army brat and living all over the world, I got to come here and spend my adult life, and I've been very blessed. I can remember in 1979, when I started as a rookie, rookie, rookie patrol officer, the southern road in Ida Street was gravel. We had one store open, 7-Eleven, and thank goodness it was open 24 hours, because that's the only place that a rookie patrol officer could go stay awake on a midnight shift. I want, especially want to thank the citizens and the volunteers for the Parks Department, was the Library Board, the Planning Commission, VZA, and I'm sure I'm missing some, so please forgive me. There's just so many people out there, have been coaches, have been mentors within the community, and I've heard council members say it all the time, that we wouldn't be where we're at without them. So, please believe me, everything you've done, and I've watched the city grow, it is very, it was very welcome, and I see the difference it made in this community. Now, the city employees, you know, a lot of you don't know Jeff Holt started, he was our street supervision, started two years after I did, 1981, and he's still with us. And I think when you have employees that we've got, like the chief and other employees, Ken, I feel like that's been with us 10, 20, 30 years, shows a lot about how the governing body and the employees work together. Because nowadays, a lot of people jump ship and run away, and go somewhere else. And I'm just so pleased with the employees that we've got on board. And some of the special ones that I've had the opportunity to work with have been special Ken Miller, who I brought him in as a construction consultant when we did Main Street. I didn't tell him everything that he had to do, but, and he reminds me of that every day, but he did a great job, and that's why we have the the fifth lane coming down Main Street. And Ken, I'm very pleased that we were able to keep you in another facility, so I'm glad to see you here. You know, we got Sarah, the chief, Beth, Tony, Terry, Jason, Mike, and Matt, and I'm hoping I'm not missing anybody that have just do a great. You've got some of the best department heads I've ever seen. You know, when you look at the way to run the city, whether it be from the government or it be from the employees, we are the model. We really are the model, and everybody in this room plus up on the screen and the citizens should be very thankful and happy for that. And then I come to Tim, the man that reminds me on a regular basis that I did not bring the Kansas City Chiefs or the Royals, their championship until he came on. Thank you, Tim. But Tim, it's been a pleasure working with you. I think you were alluding to it, neither one of us knew what to thank when I first became manager. We've both probably heard some things that were fair and unfair about each other. But I knew, once we got to know each other after three months, that the relationship we would build would be fine. One old city manager and one new one that was definitely doing a great job, we put together. I will miss our conversations about businesses, about helping the schools, about roads, about employees, and our texts, and things we had to work on together. They were very, they meant a lot to me. But what even means more than that is our friendship. I consider you a very good friend, and I hope that you are here for a long time to come. When they chose you as the next city administrator, governing body made the right choice. So Tim, thank you for all your work with me. Last year has been very exciting at Lansing. It took us 10 years, but we got quick trip. Car wash, Harbor Freight, McDonald's, and there's a bunch of more that the governing body is gonna be dealing with next year that we're gonna be bringing on, which I'm just very excited for the city. I'll still be living here, so I'll still come to the ribbon cuttings and be part of this, but I just, I'm very excited what y'all are gonna be having to do. And I have to hats off to the governing body for the vision and the staff for purchasing Town Center. This is something we should have done years ago, and for y'all to take that, I think you're already seeing the response we're getting from everybody that comes in. And we can't talk about a lot of them now, because there'll be deals made and you'll be coming together to talk about that, but I think y'all are in a perfect position. So for council members that make that decision and purchase that, led by Tim and Matt's recommendation, I'm very happy for all of y'all. I look forward to see what that brings. I also wanted to thank all the city businesses that came in our city, whether they've been here since the beginning of time or they've been here since the last few years or the last 10 years. These businesses make Lansing. They had enough faith in us to come in here and set up. Businesses aren't easy to run. There's cash flow issues and things like that, but please believe me, businesses, we are very proud. And I noticed, I heard some council members saying, always saying, what else can we do to help the business be successful? And that is absolutely right attitude. Last but not least, I'm proud of the city council. We do not always agree, but when we go through all the issues, we usually come out with something that really works. It has been a pleasure working with all of you. As I said, sure that, as I'm sure most people know, I'll be the county commissioner, and I hope to continue to be able to assist any point that you think I can help you out with that. I also wanted to take a time and just thank Greg Bueller. I'm gonna miss your comments at the end of the meeting, guy. I may have been the only one, but I enjoyed them, Greg, so thank you very much.
Thanks, Mayor.
Okay, then we come down to Jesse. Jesse, been a pleasure working with you. I always knew where you stood. And that was, it's always to have that person on the board. So you're very blunt, say, hey, this is the way I see it. You definitely helped us make some of those decisions on that.
Thanks, Mike. Thanks, Mayor.
Marcus, who I met when he first came to Lansing. For his son to play on my football team, because he was late, he had to help me coach. And we've been coaching and doing things together since then. Marcus, I think you fit right in with this group, and I think you guys have continued doing some exciting things.
Thank you, Mayor.
And then it comes to Gene. I always thought it was good to have two mayors up here, so we could bounce things off each other. And Gene, it's been a, it's been a pleasure listening to some of your ideas and some of your leadership roles that you've done in the past. So Gene, I appreciate that.
Well, thank you, Mike, and good luck to you, buddy.
Thank you. And then I come to Davey, Councilmember Trinkle, who came on 20 years ago and was working, I believe, with his dad, and he was doing some business, he worked a lot of hours, but we brought him on with the promise that there wouldn't be many executive sessions. Little did I know, we were getting ready to start annexing. So we had one and two for the next four months. Dave has never let me forget that. And, but, but at the same time, Dave, your common sense approach to items on the agenda and people is something I really, I really respected. Don, I love you mustache, always will, but Don was the person that I could call, whether I was city administrator or when I was a mayor or whether Tim and I couldn't make a ribbon cutting, Don was always willing to drop anything and come out there and represent the city. And Don, I appreciate that very much.
Thank you, Mike.
Kerry came to Lansing and I was on his site board for a while with the new middle school. I had the honor of coaching his son. We got to talk quite a bit, get to know each other. As I've always said, he's my favorite middle school principal, and I hope you enjoy your retirement, Kerry. Then we got Tony. We got Tony, my hard-headed Marine, who's the next mayor coming in. Tony, I have all the faith in the world about how you look at items and how you break them apart to get the best results for everybody in the community. And I know you'll be successful, Tony, in what your, in the leadership you're gonna provide here. You've got a great group of council members, you've got a great staff, and the future is so bright for all of you. And again, I just want to thank all the residents and everybody, the opportunity to be able to serve in my hometown for over 40 years. And with that, I'll start with Tony.
Well, okay, Mike, I'll start out by, you know, thanking you. Somebody who gives 40 years of their life, 40-plus, to, you know, public services is quite a milestone. I know you're gonna continue as you go to, you know, the county, but you've done a lot for the city. I've always appreciated your honesty. I think we've always been honest with each other. I appreciate you inviting me to lunch when you were the city administrator to talk over issues if we didn't see eye to eye. So I did take a lot from that, and I will use some of that when I take over as mayor. So good luck to you at the county. I know you'll be there for us, like you have been here, and we'll miss you. I know you're right up the street, but I miss having you around. I also wanted to just congratulate Officer Munoz and Martin on their life-saving awards. It's pretty motivating to have police officers on your force who get those awards. Shows the other side of, you know, law enforcement. They're not just there to, you know, write tickets. They're there to save lives and keep us safe, so thanks to those two officers. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Tony. Hey Kerry?
First of all, I'd like to thank Officer Martin and Munoz. I want to congratulate them. To be a part of saving two lives, Officer Munoz, is just absolutely amazing. And I agree with what Tony said. I think our policemen throughout the United States sometimes get judged harshly, and I think they do much more good than that, for sure. And Mike, congratulations on your tenure as city administrator and then as a mayor. I'm not sure that that is very common, so kind of a cool thing. And remember us when you're on the county, so. Mike, I will always say that we've always been able to be honest with each other, and we didn't always agree, but we dusted ourselves off and went about our business, so thank you for doing that and thank you for your continued work for our community and county.
Thank you, Kerry.
That's all I have.
Don?
Yes, I'd also like to give my personal congratulations to Officer Munoz and Officer Martin. You've done yourselves proud, you've done your families proud, and you've made me very, very proud of our police officers and what they're capable of doing. Thank you for your continued service and please continue. Mike, I've worked with you for a long time, since about 1997. We're finally getting rid of you, I mean, you're finally moving on. But I wish you the best of luck up there at the county, and please be there for us when we need our help down here at Lansing, and if I'm available, if you want to hire a consultant for yourself, I'm available. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Don. Mr. Trinkle?
Well, Officer Martin Mendez, congratulations, and it's, it's an honor to have him as police officers in the city of Lansing, and I'm sure everybody in the city is, feels the same way. It's not very often, like you say, most of them get to do it twice in one month, and that's I've always, when I worked on the ambulances, I can remember them guys talking about three codes in one night, so I imagine that is probably pretty stressful them guys have to pull that off. And you, Mr. Smith, oh boy. I'm gonna, I'm gonna do a lot of praying that you have a lot of executive sessions, and every time you go in one, I'm gonna clap. So you hear things clapping out towards Lansing, it's me jumping up and down since you're going in an executive session. But not really, Michael, you know, over 20-some years working around you, I know we slammed a couple doors in each other's face at different times, but, and, you know, I really, really do appreciate what I've learned from you and around you and the past councils, and I wish you the best of luck. And I'm gonna have to agree with Stoudnica, we're finally getting rid of you. You know, I mean, I think, how much have we got in that pot, Don? We got it all figured up there, how much we? But Mike, don't forget us out here, brother. I mean, you know, we're still, we're still gonna, we're still gonna need you, man, so, you know, and everybody on the COVID, let's keep hanging in there. I know it's getting tiresome, but I think we're eventually get it, get it taken care of, and that's, that's all I got. I pass the rest of my time to my compadre.
Thank you, Dave. Gene?
Well, Mike, I think you and I have an interesting relationship that none of them else have had with you, and that was at my time as a council member and you as a city administrator, then me as the mayor and you as a city administrator, and now you're the mayor and I'm back on the council again. So it's kind of a unique deal that we have between us. We haven't always, you know, like everybody else, we haven't always seen eye to eye, but but we've pulled through, and I think we've done a lot of good things for the city. And with your help at the county, I think we'll be able to do some more. So I wish you the best of luck. Thanks for everything you've done. I want to say congratulations and thank you to Officers Munoz and Martin. Very proud of both of them, and we're very lucky to have them. And I'll get on the COVID thing again and say, we got a ways to go, folks. Let's don't take our foot off the accelerator. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Gene.
Well, I'd like to just thank our two officers up front, Munoz and Officer Martin. And, you know, it's that commitment and it's that dedication of those police officers, and the fact that both of them, without hesitation, jumped in to do life-saving actions. And above and beyond, we don't have that many police officers, but the fact that when they're not in uniform and doing their deeds, they're also training and preparing for that, and that goes into a lot. So I'd really like to highlight, you know, why they joined and why they continue to serve says it all tonight, and how we recognize them, and how the rest of our police force and our first responders continue to give. So I just can't thank them and their families enough for what they do. And Mayor Smith, since 2001, buddy, I have known you as a servant, a public servant, and I just can't thank you enough, because it's always everyone else first and then you, and that's just who you are, man. It's, if it's not coaching youth, it's coaching adults. If it's not serving as a policeman to the captain, it's serving as a city administrator to the mayor. You're just a public servant, and I just can't thank you enough for continuing to give and give and give. to give and give and give and serve this great city that we have of Lansing, a place for the future, and I just can't, I can't thank you enough, Mike. Thank you for your friendship, thank you for recommending and supporting me to join this group of fine, of fine folks up here and these leaders. It's truly a blessing, and it is truly great to be a part of the team. I wish you the best of luck, and yet you live behind me, so I can always just stop by and rattle you. If you're not, as, as the rest of the team, if you're not remembering us and supportless, I'll stop at your door, knock on your door to remind you.
He can have quite a few visitors.
How could I forget any of y'all?
Thanks again, Mike, and, and, and then the last thing I'd like to leave is, is, hey, I appreciate the turn signals we now have on Eisenhower. We, we have additional couple of turn signals, it makes it so much easier now to either turn left on De Soto or, or, you know, vice versa on Eisenhower. So if you haven't, if you haven't seen, we got turn signals on all four there at the intersection of Eisenhower, and it's great. Thanks a lot.
Thank you, Marcus. Jesse?
Yeah, ditto what everybody else has been saying. Congratulations to Officer Munoz and Martin. You know, after reading the story this week and the agenda, and then hearing Chief Wayman tell the story, it's, it sounds like it's a well-deserved award. You know, and like the grandparent of the infant said, we need to recognize people for things they do like that. And it sounds like they needed to be recognized tonight, and we appreciate everything that they do for the city. And we appreciate all the officers that work for the city, that's for sure. Mike, you know, we've, we've never, well, I'm not gonna say never, we, we've, we've batted heads a couple of times on some issues, but you know, I'm, I'm just as hard-headed as you are. So if I believe in something, I stand my ground. But I really appreciate the advice you've given me over the years, and, you know, enlighten me in things that the city has done, especially in my early years on the council, not that I'm old, but, you know, I've been on the council terribly, terribly long time. But after watching you serve, I really appreciate all the service and years you've given to the city, and it's a real honor to watch you serve in every capacity that you've done, and it's been an honor to serve with you, and I just wish you luck in serving the county, Leavenworth County. That's all I've got.
I appreciate it. Greg?
I'll, I'll, you know, jump on the bandwagon and congratulate Officer Munoz and Officer Martin again. You know, in the strife that our society is dealing with, I think that the city residents know that our police are truly out there to help, and, and acts like this show that. So, Mike, for you, Mayor, it's been ten years since I was elected as a council. Just like everybody else, we've bumped heads. Like Tony said, I appreciate you taking me out to lunch a few times when we had some discussions to have, and things have always worked well. We talk about the city staff, and I know that a lot of the department heads and a lot of the key people here that are currently on the staff were hired during your administration as the city administrator, and you continue to serve, and we appreciate it. Again, don't forget your roots, where you came from, because you know how we talk about those county commission people sometimes. So with that, on this day in history, Mayor Mike Smith, after serving the city of Lansing for forty-one years, got a round of ovation from the city council and everybody in the council chambers. And with that, Mayor, I move adjourn.
Second.
Got a motion, second to adjourn?
Mr. McNeil?
That would be a yes with the mic on.
Yes.
Mr. Stoudnica?
Yes.
Mr. Trinkle?
Yes.
Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
Mr. Major?
Yes.
Mr. Garvey?
Yes.
Mr. Bueller?
Yes.
We are adjourned, folks. Have a good evening.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
Goodnight, y'all, thanks, Mike.
Still gonna be there Monday, right, Mike?